All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to move right into item number 1.04, which is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to items 1.05 and 1.06. 1.05 is the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on March 19th, 2020, and 1.06 is the approval of the minutes from our committee meeting on April 7th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
No motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to item number two on our agenda, which is the Education Committee Report. Ms. Raraka?
Okay, we have an approval of Elementary Parent Teacher Conference Nights for the 2021 school year. They are Monday, November 2nd, Thursday, November 5th, Monday, February 8th, and Thursday, February 11th.
Thank you, could do the 2.02 as well.
And we have an approval for the high school, and now it says middle school also, parent teacher conference nights for the 2021 school year. Thursday, September 7th, Thursday, November 5th, Thursday, January 14th, and Thursday, February 11th.
May I get a motion to approve the dates for the parent teacher conferences?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
Do you have one more item?
Yes. So our next is the Tri-State Planetarium five-year lease.
I'd like to motion that we approve the lease, we out for five years.
Okay. Any, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just think this is an absolutely wonderful opportunity for our district to work so closely with the planetarium in our backyard. Any opportunity we have to continue that relationship, I want to take advantage of at full ability.
Any other discussion?
It certainly makes us special.
Exactly, and they, if you read the lease, they're requesting a sign outside. You know, we'll make it match with navy and red, so that everyone going by knows that we have a planetarium. So that was one of the things they were requesting.
So, a couple of other things in that lease that I like. Well, number one, they did have space in the middle school that we had to find, new homes for because of the move from View coming over to the middle school in the fall. So that's kind of what necessitated the, looking at the lease in the first place. But one of the things that I liked in this lease was that, that with some of the changes, we're now going to have some voice on their board, correct? So it's either the superintendent you're designee or a member of the board that's going to sit in on the board of the planetarium. So, and I think, I think that's a fantastic way for us to further the cooperation between our two organizations, since they do use our facilities as their home, so.
And as a plug, even, and I'm not sure how this summer's going to go, we all don't, but the planetarium has some of the most interesting programs for our summer learners in the camps that they do. Last summer, when I was here, they had an actual rocket scientist here teaching one of the workshops with the kids. And they do a Lego lab, they do so many wonderful programs, and it's just great learning opportunity for our kids, that if you haven't done anything with the planetarium yet, you can, you can come and do stuff as a family. It doesn't just have to be the kids' classroom. And especially look at their website and their Facebook page for their summer programming series, and follow along to see what they're going to do with this year's programming, if they're able to move things around.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
All right, with everybody approving, we're going to move on to item number three in our agenda, and this brings us to Personnel Recommendations.
Thank you, President Atwood. Under the Superintendent's Recommendations 3.01, you will find a resolution to suspend certificated staff contracts of eight new teachers in accordance with the applicable reduction in force provisions of the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Now this reduction in force in the certificated staff is a result of financial reasons. We need to right-size the district, especially as we anticipate budget cuts coming from the state due to the stay-at-home order situation the whole nation finds itself in, which has greatly impacted the state budget. This is a regretful situation, but necessary to be fiscally responsible, and we wish these teachers well as they continue their educational careers. In Section 3.02, we have the retirement of Larry Parker, a Norwood High School teacher, and we congratulate him on his retirement. In Section 3.03, we have the resignation of several teachers, and we also wish them well in their future career choices. In Section 04, you'll find the annual, this happens every year, non-renewals of our educational aides and our student assistants in Number 1. In Number 2, it's the annual non-renewal of our Avenues for Success Club Advisors and the before and after-school staff. And in Number 4, the program coordinators. Jumping back up to Number 3, we have the annual non-renewal of our physical therapists, and I'm told this is standard operating procedure every year. And in Number 5, we have the non-renewal of classified subs, also done annually. So now for the exciting part, in Number 6, I'm delighted to recommend the approval of a proposal for a girls' wrestling team for the 2020-21 school year. And that concludes my, my section.
Wonderful, thank you for that. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the Certified Reduction in Force Resolution as an individual item. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So I do want to say something about this. You know, this, this isn't a decision I don't think any of us takes lightly. I think we all have to sit and really weigh whether or not something like this is justified. And I, I think these moves are justified, but in no way, shape, or form should this reflect on the individuals reflected. So I think, I want to personally thank those individuals for their service. You know, I, I think the dedication that they had to the district was tremendous, they made us a better district. And I, you know, I feel sorry that things like this have to happen, but as board members, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the district itself, and not only to the district, but to the citizens of the city of whom which we're a public institution of. And, and so we have to weigh those and balance those. So, you know, I want to wish those certified teachers the best of luck, but this is something that unfortunately every district has to go through every great once in a while. So, does anybody else have any comments? No? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
Now I'd like to ask for a motion to approve items 3.02, which is the resignation, and 3.03, or no, 3.02 is the retirement, 3.03 is the resignation. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve those two items.
I'll motion. I'll second.
You'll second?
So I can't hear you over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll try.
Speak up.
Any discussion on this?
I just want to say thanks to Mr. Parker. I love him. He was a great teacher when I had him here, he was a great teacher in my years afterwards. I just want to thank him for so many years of being just a perfect example of a, of an awesome Norwood teacher.
And, and I would like to echo those comments. And again, I'd like to thank the, the individuals that are resigning and moving on in their careers. I'd like to thank them as well for their service toward district. And, you know, for the time that they were here with us, they did make us a better district. So I'd like to thank them as well. Is there any other comments? Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
So that brings us to items 3.04, which is the non-renewals. And I believe...
These are the annual non-renewals that happen of our educational aides and student assistants, also our Avenues for Success.
Yes.
Club advisors and before and after school.
And then also the physical therapists and the...
Classified subs.
For the classified subs. So can I get, I'd like to make a motion that we approve these non-renewals. May I get a second?
I'll second.
And this is items 1 through 5 and 6 is the one that is separate, correct? 6 is the wrestling proposal. For some reason, it got lumped in in terms of font.
Yes.
I'm assuming that's the item separated?
Yeah.
Okay, so 1 through 5.
1, yeah, well, 4, 4 and 5.
Got it.
I have, I have 1 separate and 2 through 6.
2 through 6.
Is that okay that way, or do you want it differently?
Uh, no, we can do, we can do 3.04.1 as a separate vote, and then 2 through 6 as a separate vote.
Okay.
So I'd like to amend my motion that we're just voting on the non-renewals for the aides.
Yes. Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Are you okay with that second?
Great.
All right. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
Now I'd like to make a motion for 3.04, 2 through 6. So this is the non-renewals for the Avenues for Success, the non-renewals for the physical therapists, the 21st Century, the classified subs, and the passing of the resolution to include an all-girls wrestling program for the next school year.
I would like to motion.
Is there a second? Wonderful. Any discussion?
I'm excited.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
All right, and then that brings us to item number 4 in our agenda, which is our Policy Committee Report. Mrs. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as we discussed last week at the committee meeting, we have one policy for review tonight. As I mentioned last week, I'm going to motion that we complete both readings of this policy this evening. And this policy is going to allow for use of electronic signatures. And as we discussed last week, this is electronic signatures across the board. So our parents are able to complete paperwork more easily. This way, this will allow for Superintendent Norwood and our treasurer to, to make changes through construction and things like that, so this will help speed up the process of that. So do we need, do we need...
So it's going to be two motions.
Two motions.
So the, the first motion is to suspend the rules to have the multiple readings of the ordinance in one meeting. And then, once we vote on that and approve that, and we have the multiple readings, then we'll have a second motion to approve the, the new policy and guideline. So...
All right, so can we get a motion then to suspend?
Suspend the rules to have multiple, both readings tonight. So there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? So this is, this first motion is just so that we can have both readings tonight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
Okay. So now, if you just want to read what the policy is, twice?
Twice?
Yeah, we have to read it twice, we're doing both readings. You'll have to read the entire policy, just the name of it.
Oh, use of electronic signatures?
And then one more time.
Use of electronic signatures.
Perfect. All right.
I'd like to motion to accept, I'd like to motion to accept.
We only did one of those. All right, so we have a motion to adopt the new policy. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Second? A second time? Absolutely.
This is not something that we normally do, so...
Extreme times.
Extreme times. Yes.
You could say that again? Get it? It's terrible.
Well, I think we should just reiterate, for anyone who wasn't watching our last meeting, that it's really important to do this and to do it quickly because of COVID, and we can't go into offices and sign things. And a lot of parents are feeling very insecure about what next year holds, especially with enrollment and not being able to come in for meetings, and this will really help them. So for anyone who didn't see that at the last meeting.
Yes. Yeah, this is really important that we implement this as quickly as possible. In fact, I think the language is, is that we're backdating this.
Yes, I would like to backdate it to...
March?
March 13th?
Was it 12th or?
13th?
13th?
Yes.
The governor spoke?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
All right, and that brings us to item number 5 in our agenda, which is the Finance Committee Report. Mrs. Cantons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Financial reports are attached to the agenda for your review and approval tonight, along with the view change order listing. 5.02. Does your agenda have the appropriation resolution on it?
Yes, mine, mine does.
Good, okay, so 5.02 is appropriation resolution. 5.03 is acceptance of amounts and rates. This document is from our county auditor and approves our tax revenue rates for next year. All the rates are the same as last year. 5.04, planes moving quotes to move View to the east wing of the middle school and to move Sharpsburg back into the building. 5.05, the builder's risk policy for Norwood View. 5.06, the builder's risk policy, I'm, let me look at this. The builder's risk policy for Graybach. According to their contract, we need to have this insurance, and that is standard. 5.07, a notice of commencement for our View construction. This document alerts the public subcontractors and other general contractors that we have accepted a bid and are moving forward with Views renovation project. And I think we have 5.01 through 5.06, 6 separate.
Yes. We have a motion to approve 5.01 through 5.06.
I'd like to motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion of any of these items? So a lot of this is, is pretty straightforward. I mean, we have our monthly financial reports. We have planes moving, and this is, this is moving people from, around at Sharpsburg, as well as moving people from View to the middle school for next fall. We're establishing an escrow account for the View construction project. And then again, you know, just the notice of commencement that we're moving forward with that. So I think all of these are pretty straightforward, and we discussed those in depth previously, so...
Yes.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
5.08, a resolution declaring it necessary to substitute levy. This substitute levy will replace our expiring emergency levy. It is important for our taxpayers to note that we are not asking for additional revenue. This will just continue the emergency levy that was passed in November of 2011. The state of Ohio has stopped paying tangential personal property tax allocations, and we cannot continue without extending this emergency levy due to that loss of state revenues. This is a separate vote, too.
We have a motion that we approve the resolution declaring it necessary to substitute a levy that's expiring.
I'll second.
So a motion by Mrs. Rayburn. We have a second by Mrs. Ballard. Any discussion on this item?
I'll say that in 2011, this levy was highly supported by residents, and that was the reason I got really, I started getting really involved, I mean, my kids were really little at the time, in Norwood schools. I was asked to be on that levy committee. And I had no idea how it would go, I hadn't lived here very long. And I was so overwhelmed with how many people came to the polls and said, I have to vote for this levy. My grandchildren go here. And because that levy passed, my children were able to go to the Montessori preschool, started right when my children were ready to go. So that levy has a special place in my heart, and we're just asking not for something new, just for that to continue. And it's already been approved overwhelmingly by Norwood residents.
Yeah.
In 2011, yes.
I, I think those are great comments. I, I would just like to say that the whole purpose that we're even doing this in the first place is because of the state's decision to eliminate a funding source through the, the personal...
Tangential personal property.
Tangential property tax, yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, if the state didn't do that, we may be in a different spot.
Correct.
But they did, and so here we are. And so we're not asking for any new money, we're not asking for any additional money. We're just asking to keep our revenue stream steady so that we can properly look at our financial situation.
Correct.
So...
And if we've learned anything in recent weeks, it is how fundamentally crucial our amazing teachers and staff are. And I would hate to see anything affect that in some negative way.
Yeah, so this is, this is just the resolution declaring it necessary. So this is just our declaration of need. So now what, what this does is this will allow, if, you know, there are parents out there that want to support this, because we've declared our need, or we're going to vote on declaring our need, that then makes it possible for groups to get together to want to support this. So that's what this vote here does tonight.
That's correct.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
5.09, the disposal of an inventory item. We're disposing of Allison Elementary Playground equipment as the grounds and buildings are not open to the public. We are approving the disposal and donation of the equipment to the city of Norwood for a playground in memory of Lisa Tena. 5.10. The Board of Revision Settlement Agreement. This is a small agreement with a local commercial property owner that is in our best interest. And 5.11, advertisement for high school renovation.
So do we, do we want to do all three of those at once, or just do the...
5.10 is separated on.
Yeah.
5.10 is?
Well, no, 5.11 is separated, the advertisement is separated.
That sounds good.
All right.
I printed my agenda too quickly, I think.
So we're, we're going to do 5.09, which is the disposal. Now we're calling it disposal of an inventory item.
It means we're donating it to the city, and they can use it and make it awesome.
That's right.
Yes. Thank you, city.
And then 5.10, which is the Board of Revision Settlement Agreement.
No, no, 8 and 9 are...
No, 8 and 9 on your printed agenda is not the same as, she printed the agenda too.
Oh, before it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have 8 and 9 as the disposal, and 10 is the renovations.
Right, it's, it's 9 and 10. Look on, yeah.
Got it.
Got it, all right. So 5.09, so the disposal inventory item and the Board of Revision Settlement Agreement. May I have a motion that we approve those?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So here, I just want to reiterate again, we're calling this a disposal of an inventory item. That just means that we're taking it out of our inventory. It doesn't mean that we're throwing it away. This is actually being donated to the city of Norwood so that they can find a home for it and, and continue to allow kids to use that. Because that place has not been used in quite a while, and it'd be nice to see kids on that equipment. So... Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
And that leaves us with 5.11.
5.11, yes. Um, with the scope, while the scope of this renovation hasn't changed for the high school renovation, the timeline has. The district is advancing part of the work at the high school to take place this summer. We hope by moving this up on our schedule that the bids will come in lower due to the recession and, or the expected recession, and that some of the work can take place while the building is already closed due to the pandemic. As you know, the high school, typically, high schools are never closed. So it's really hard to renovate a high school. Well, now they're closed by executive order of the governor, so we hope to get some of that work done now.
Right. So may I have a motion that we approve the advertisement for the, for the first phase of the high school renovation?
I'll motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I have a couple items that I need to bring up for this. So when looking at sending out bids for this contract, I wanted to see if it would be possible to request at least a 20% supplier diversity, including an MBE or an FBE, that we actually require some of these larger companies to subcontract with minority-owned businesses and female-owned businesses. We can work with groups like Messer, who have established diversity, Meadon, Jostin. There are several very large companies who have done this successfully in the past when seeking contracts. If we would like to be equitable as a district, we have to put our money where our mouth is. And I think that it is a really good opportunity for us, since we're sending out a new project to bid, to see if those companies can be called to task and submit bids that include MBE and FBE contracted workers. So if you've got a, you know, a job that requires electrical, plumbing, concrete, all those different types of things, you can subcontract those out and choose locally-minded businesses. And I would like to see some numbers presented to us that include those types of businesses.
Okay, so just so that I understand what you're asking here, you just want to make sure that there is a box that needs to be checked. That says that the contractors that are going to be submitting for the bids have some policy in place to where they're routinely looking to subcontract for minority, local minority contractors.
Correct, at least a percentage, and we can determine what that percentage might be. But I think that realistically, we have a lot more small local businesses that really can't bid for overall large projects. They just may not have the manpower to be able to subcontract the way some of these larger industry businesses can, which I totally understand. But they have the ability to subcontract, and I think we have a responsibility to our district to make sure that we are supporting local business and that we are diversifying the people who are working in our community and working in our schools. And I think it isn't above scope to say that we should hold them to that responsibility as well, at, at least by a percentage to submit numbers to us that have that. at, at least by a percentage to submit numbers to us that have that goal in mind.
So let me ask this question. So is, is this a policy-related issue? Do we need to have a policy in place for this in order to ask for this? Or are there already policies within public bidding processes that already take this into account?
I'm going to have to check with our legal counsel. I'm not sure. I, I know there's very strict policies for bidding.
Right.
And so I'm not sure that, that, how this can be accomplished, but I certainly will check.
Right.
I know Cincinnati has had that in the past where it was part of their provision, and it was a policy made that would require them when they sent out bids to have certain set-asides for minority businesses. They weren't able to achieve the 20% goal, but I think that realistically, we should at least be asking our, our bid books to come in with some of those things in mind.
Right, but the issue is, is that bringing this up now on the day that we're going to vote on this? I mean, this was on our agenda to discuss last week at our committee meeting, and this wasn't mentioned at all.
It didn't come up until the very next day at our Oaks meeting. We had a very similar topic come up for bidding.
Right.
And it was brought up to us that, that MBEs needed to be considered. And when this came up to us, I figured that we need to consider MBEs as well.
Right, but the issue is, is that we may not be able to do this for this advertisement because we may actually have to adjust our policies.
And if we can't do it for this one, we need to make a policy that we can do it in the future.
Right, that's, that's, it's one I'm trying to, to highlight here.
Again, it's going to come down to how everyone votes, but I believe that we have a responsibility and an opportunity here to be forward-thinking and be equitable.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I'm just saying that in order to be forward-thinking, we may actually have to adjust other things within our system, within our policy system, in order to make this work. So, and that's what Julie's going to find out, is that, if that's even possible. So it's in, so we may vote on this.
I know it's possible. It's just a matter of getting it to, like you said, we have to create a policy to make it effective.
Right.
I understand that. It's just something that I would like to see in our bidding process going forward. And if this just gives me the opportunity to bring it to the table.
Okay.
It may not be applicable for this particular one.
Okay.
But I want it going forward.
All right, perfect. So just so that we understand, we're going to look into this to see if we can adjust, if we need to adjust our policies in order to create this box that contractors bidding on work for us can check whether or not they're doing diversity subcontracting.
And that, that doesn't mean hiring just the work staff. That would be a minority-owned business or a female-owned business. So some, some provisions only have their workforce making up the minority, and that's, that's not what the policy would have in mind, if, for what I'm thinking.
Right, so I, I think, I think that portion of it should move into our policy committee for, to see how best it can be implemented within our district.
Okay.
And then bring in our legal counsel to make sure that, number one, we're not stepping on anybody's toes or doing anything that's outside of our lane.
Right.
Right, so, but I, I think it's a great idea. I just don't want to run before we walk.
So are we okay then? Because the scope's already been developed for this, this part of the project at the high school, and the advertisement's been written, and it's due to the papers within a week. So are we okay then?
I am, I am fine moving this forward. It just gave me a very unique opportunity to bring this to the table and let you guys know about it, because it was something that came up at our discussion at the Oaks last week as well for, for this, and it just happened to be the exact same time we were talking about doing a bid process. And I said, "There is no better time like the present than to bring this forward. If we want to be an equitable district, we have to act like an equitable district, and this is going to be our first step in doing that."
So do the Oaks have a policy like that?
We are currently developing an equity policy. Obviously, a lot of things have been derailed a little bit for us at the moment, but there's a lot of research going into finding effective equity policies from around, like, from the national standpoint, from the state standpoint, that we can implement into career tech and how it applies. We've got several folks working on it, but the bid process specifically was brought up in looking for equitable businesses who were seeking out minority and female-led businesses. Used to, we had a lot of trouble finding smaller businesses to be bonded from, you know, they just couldn't get the bonded licensing. But now they can, a lot of them can. So for larger companies, like I said, Messer, they created diversity, and they've worked very hard to pair up with minority-owned businesses to make sure those contracts are not being overlooked, especially with those bigger, huge contracts that a small business may not even bother trying to bid for. We could at least bid out some of that work to them and be good neighbors. So like I said, I just think it's something that we should look at as a district, and if we can't do this because of the timeline, I would like to take advantage of this opportunity to get us started, but I also don't want to not be equitable in our processes. So I want to get that on the table as soon as possible going forward.
Right, okay. So I, I think, I think we'll move that discussion over into the policy committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So any other discussion about the advertisement for bids? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
All right, and that concludes the finance report. So we'll move on to the hearing of the public, and as we've had nobody show up to want to speak to us tonight, we'll skip that and go straight into the report section.
I would say we've been sort of telling people they could email us, and I just checked the email, and I'm checking the live feed, and I don't see anything. But if there had been, I would say that the people would have said.
Wonderful. Good deal. So, report section, any board announcements?
I got one.
Mrs. Ballard?
Okay, I'm super excited. I have great news for our seniors. At least I hope they find it as exciting as me. I was able to reach out to my contact at Coney Island, and they have, I talked to one of their heads, Jason Reed at Coney Island, and he was able to secure Moonlight Pavilion for us. Not the gardens, the gardens is under repair currently. So this will be a closed space. It comes with the lighting, a stage, dance floor. They'll provide their white wedding chairs, their round tables, all the linens. We'll be figuring out food arrangements so that we can include dinner. I know we usually don't do dinner for prom, but this is going to be moved to the summer. We have held a date of July 25th for prom. Jason was so nice, he said, "We're not going to require a deposit. We're going to hold your date for you, and if for some reason, you know, if we're not allowed to open or still hold these large gatherings, by the time we get there," he said, "any money that we had put down by then would be completely refunded." He's working with us so graciously. We will be able to go in and set up our own decor, bring in our DJ, whatever else we want to do, and use, you know, their, their full-on services. So I really just want to thank all the folks at Coney Island who are pairing with us for this and who have saved that date for us, and I really look forward to making something special happen for our seniors. I'm sorry you guys are having to go through this abrupt change, but we're really going to try to save some normalcy for you in this. So plan for July 25th for your prom, it's a Saturday night, and, you know, get excited, so I know I am.
All right, that's awesome. Any other board announcements?
There was, we got announced as best music. Pull that in. Named as one of the best communities for music education.
Yes.
Oh, that was pretty cool.
Yes.
Yeah.
By the NAMM Foundation. Thank you, music teachers.
Any other board announcements? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Atwood. I would like to give a huge shout-out to our staff members who are working to ensure that instruction is continuing in Norwood schools during this difficult time. You know, I, as you all know, teachers are calling homes and families, sending emails, doing streaming videos. We're doing teleconferencing on Google Meet, and our teachers were even featured on Channel 9 for their interesting lessons, which has been great. We have sent home two lesson packets. We've distributed Chromebooks to make sure that everyone has access. We are continuing to distribute a breakfast-lunch combination on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and we would like to continue this into the summer if the board approves, because it's kind of hard just to stop at the end of May, especially if we have a lot of families still out of work. We are planning a virtual summer school to prevent the summer slide in learning, and more information will be coming out on that. So thank you, Board Member Raiber, for that great idea last week. So we are working on that. We want our students to know that the ACT and SAT for June is canceled, and you need to contact your counselor for the August dates. Also, registration fees, for many universities are actually waiving the registration fees, so the counselors have a form you can fill out if you need to have those waived. We already know the prom has been rescheduled, which is very exciting. Our graduation has been rescheduled for Monday, August 10th at 7:00 p.m. at the Centaun Center at XU. So we're very happy to be able to reschedule that. Our National Society, our National Honor Society induction will occur in the fall. And we had a great Norwood parade last Friday, and it was featured on TV. I saw it on Channel 9. Haley Harris, our high school counselor, she organized it, and they interviewed her, which was very, very nice. And the parade is featured on our Facebook page if you missed it. So in the meantime, stay safe, stay strong, everyone, and thank you. And that concludes my report.
So we have given out, since schools have been out, over 5,000 meals.
Yes, yes, we have.
To the community. So in the month that we've been out, we have given away over 5,000 meals.
And that's why we feel we need to continue on into the summer, because we think the need will still be there.
I completely agree, so, and I wholly support that. And I urge my fellow board members to continue supporting that because I think it's a great service that we're doing for our community, so. Thank you. Great Oaks report, Mrs. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving forward with construction, just like we are here in, in the district, that will be uninterrupted for now. And our, unfortunately, our graduation ceremonies as well had to be canceled, but we will be determining those dates as soon as we possibly can for rescheduling. And that's about all we've had. We had our very first teleconference meeting with everybody on, on the phone, which was very interesting, but pretty much it was just business as usual except for the dates being canceled. And as soon as I have those for our students, I'll get those out to you guys. That concludes my report.
Perfect, thank you so much for that. Next is the Norwood Community Television Board Report that I will give. And so I will say that NCT recently has been doing nothing but just covering council meetings and our meetings. However, since they have hit a little bit of a slow time since they're not covering other events, they have had an opportunity to really focus on putting out as many videos or episodes of youth voices of greater Cincinnati. So this is the work that Mrs. Kubash has done with, with her students, and they go out and they interview leaders from all over and individuals from all over. So there are currently now over 40 of those episodes that are on NCT's streaming services for people to view for free. I know they have probably about seven or eight maybe more episodes to go, and they hope to get those out in the next couple of weeks. I mean, but, you know, so this work will help us secure further grant opportunities in the future because this, all of this work will be referenced. So this is a, a great service that the Norwood Community Television does in conjunction with our district and our students. And that concludes the Norwood Community Television Board Report. So we'll move on to the legislative report, and then again, we'll just do 705 and 707 together. Just both legislative. Mrs. Raiber?
Oh, right. Why do I have two different legislative reports?
Because one's the OSBA. Oh, that got canceled, by the way.
Okay.
They have training.
Well, all the legislation, we'll talk about it. So since our last regular meeting, a very big legislative thing happened, and that is House Bill 197, that's the Coronavirus Relief Act for Ohio, and it has many, many, many things in it, but I will highlight the things that affect schools. There is now graduation flexibility, so through September 30th. So we have until September 30th to decide if somebody is graduating or not. And so it's flexible, determined by the principal, teachers, counselors, whether or not a student will graduate. And so they don't have to take into account all the strict rules of graduation. They can forego many of those, since we haven't been in school. But only until September 30th. After that, the clock strikes midnight, and we all turn back into pumpkins. The Ohio School Report Cards are canceled for this year. The Ohio State Tests are canceled for this spring. And we will not rank school districts this year. And the third grade testing is waived, and again, flexibility with principals and teachers deciding whether or not, how they evaluate their students and if they need to be retained or not. The next big thing is that the school vouchers have been frozen for this year, so it reverts to whatever was in place last year is still going. And then also the John Peterson Special Needs Scholarship Program that involves our special needs students. That one's basically authorizing any help that special needs students need can be given by video or the telephone to help get them whatever they need. So that's the highlights.
Okay. Thank you for that. We'll move on to the Avenues for Success Report. Mrs. Raiber?
Thank you. So along with everything else, all the avenues for success, success activities have been kind of halted. However, Mrs. Ferguson's been working on getting videos from several partners from Avenues for Success that have provided programming for the clubs to produce videos that can be online. There's going to be over 100 videos from SchoolAid, Ambient Studios, Drama Kinetics, and Biocoro, and they'll all be online for parents to access whenever. It's not going to be live-run stuff, but it's going to be just, you know, kind of a library of activities and stuff that they can look at whenever, you know, their schedule dictates. It should be live next week. It won't just be for families that are already enrolled in Avenues. It'll be for all Norwood families who have access to this. They'll all just be in one place, so it should be good.
Very good. And that concludes our report section. So we'll move on to item number eight in our agenda, which is meeting notification. So we have future meetings. May 12th, 2020, we have our next committee meeting, which is scheduled to be held here at the Norwood High School Gym at 5:30. And then on May 21st, a regular scheduled forum meeting to be held here at the Norwood High School Gymnasium at 6:00 p.m. Would like to motion that we approve these future meeting dates. May I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Cole. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
All right, so we have no items removed for separate consideration. So we'll move on to item number 10, which is executive session. And for tonight, we do have one item on our agenda that we'll need to discuss in executive session. So I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1, which is the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ballard. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Raiber?
Mrs. Raiber?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck?
Yes.
All right, I have 6:52. We are in executive session. We are in executive session.